The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty-five P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamada? Mayor Santinez?
Here. Sir motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada, without objection, that will be the order. Next item, item number three, closed session. Mister Stewart?
One item tonight. It's Conference Real Property Negotiator. The property is one six eight two four Bellflower Boulevard. Negotiating parties are myself and Jerick Rivera, under negotiation price and terms of payment.
Is there any conflicts on this item, on the agenda? Nope, and there's, I don't see anyone from the public who'd like to, who would speak on this item. So with that, we will recess, we recess to closed session. Good evening, Bellflower. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh-two P. M. Back to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and there's no reportable action taken during the, the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamada? Mayor Santinez?
Here. Is our motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada, without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Dutton, and then the municipal agents will be led by Len Gurecki, Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please watch over our community here tonight, as we try to make the best decisions for the city of Bellflower. Also, as we try to make a safe and prosperous community. Lord, always protect the people that are there to make us safe, and watch over our servicemen and women, and just bless everybody here in Bellflower. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, place your right hand over your heart. Let's all eat, and to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Len. Announcement, let me make, let me start with the first announcement, additional item fourteen H. The City Council received supplemental materials from the City Attorney regarding opting into a settlement agreement to participate in the National Opiate Settlement with Tiva, Allergan, C V S, Walgreens, and Walmart. The City Attorney's Office was informed late, late Friday regarding the city's ability to participate in the settlement, which is after the agenda was posted. The government code states that upon a determination by a two-thirds vote of the members of the legislative body present at the meeting, that there is a need to take immediate action, and that the needs for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted, that an item may be added to the agenda. The city must opt-in before April eighteen, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to have a motion that this item that arose after the posting of the agenda be added as item fourteen H to the consent calendar.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to add item fourteen H to the agenda, without objection, that will be the order. Additional announcements. Save the date. The Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board is hosting a regional job fair at Sims Park on Saturday, June third, twenty twenty-three, from nine A. M. to one P. M. Dress for success, bring resumes, and be prepared for potential on-the-spot interviews. For more information, please call five six two, two seven three, nine eight eight two. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have teamed up with Kaiser Permanente to host a drug take-back initiative event on Saturday, April twenty-second, from ten A. M. to two P. M. at the Kaiser Permanente facility here at Bellflower, Bellflower Medical Office, located at ninety-four hundred East Rosecrans Avenue in Bellflower. That's the corner of, uh, Rosecrans and Clark. The collection site, its interest will be indicated on Clark Avenue. Local residents can turn in unused and expired medication anonymously for proper disposal by the Drug Enforcement Administration. The event will be free to the public. For more information, you can visit the website, W W W dot D E A dot gov, or also W W W dot K P dot org. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The city of Bellflower offers an opportunity to recognize past and present military veterans by dedicating a street pole banner, which displays a name and photo on both sides of the banner. The deadline to order banners for May installation is May first, two thousand twenty-three. Banners will be displayed along Flower Street and Alondra Boulevard between Woodruff Avenue and Bellflower Boulevard. For more information, please call five six two, eight oh four one four two four, extension two two five eight. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which will take place Tuesday, April the twenty-fifth, from nine A. M. to ten A. M. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two, eight six seven, one seven four four. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Next, we have two special presentations, announcements today. First, we have the National Law Enforcement Month proclamation, and second, we have the Fair Housing Month proclamation. So I'd like to invite my colleagues to the riser for the presentation. At this point, I'd like to invite, um, Special Assemblyman Officer, um, Shore to join us. Yeah, I'd like to make this proclamation, present this certificate. Let me read this. In appreciation, the city of Bellflower proclaims Law Enforcement Month, whereas there are more than nine-hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, whereas one of the community's most important resources are the brave, devoted peace officers who willingly dedicate their lives to securing a safe society for all. And whereas the community's peace officers have long sustained a tradition of performing the highest quality of work and providing a better life for others. And whereas Law Enforcement Month is intended to, to be a show of confidence for all peace officers and law enforcement agencies from the general public, and to provide a tremendous morale boost to the dedicated men and women wearing a badge to protect our community. Now therefore, I, Sanier Santinez, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Law Enforcement Appreciation Month in Bellflower, and support all peace officers, especially Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, assigned Mayor, Sanier Santinez, Mayor Protem Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. I cannot thank enough our peace officers, and thus represented by our L. A. County Sheriff's Department, for all the work they do. I mean, they keep us safe, and one of the things that was never, that's been never mentioned is, they help clean up any, 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 how do you say this, unsheltered encampments in the city. And that's a lot of work. It's not part of their, um, job duties, it's not in their, um, what do you call this, uh, work assignment, but they do help our, our staff, especially our public works and public safety, uh, in cleaning up the city. And most importantly, again, I would like to emphasize that they keep us safe. That's why we can sleep soundly at night, we can work at night, we can walk the city at night because of their presence in the city. So Officer James Shore, thank you so much for coming on behalf of our substation, and I'd like to present this proclamation on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much.
And I And I know that you are an accomplished public speaker, so you may say a few words.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for everything, and for this, for all law enforcement, and thank you for allowing us to serve you guys as a city.
Oh, thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Marta Torres of the Fair Housing Foundation to receive the proclamation on the Fair Housing Month. Marta, thank you so much for attending the City Council meeting. Marta?
Oh. Okay, okay, okay. Oh, action, action, okay, all right.
Marta represents the Fair Housing Foundation, that helps the city in terms of training, providing information about fair housing in the city. So I'd like to read this proclamation. In appreciation, the city of Bellflower proclaims Fair Housing Month, whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one's choice. And let me emphasize that, it is very important to me when I read this, it's the freedom to live in a home of one's choice. That is really important. Whereas this promise made to us by the nation's fair housing law, which requires that all people are treated equally in connection with the sale or rental of housing, regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, gender identity, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, age, familial status, or religion. And whereas this year marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, the original legislation targeting elimination of housing discrimination in America. And whereas since the adoption of the fair housing legislation in April nineteen sixty-eight, April has been designated Fair Housing Month. Each year, the U. S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Fair Housing Foundation organize events and activities during this month to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity in housing. And whereas April is Fair Housing Month throughout the nation, we ask, we're asking each resident of the city of Bellflower to support efforts to put into practice the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon which this great nation was founded. Therefore, now therefore, I, Sanier Santinez, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Fair Housing Month. Signed, Mayor Sanier Santinez, Mayor Protem Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. And Marta, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the city for all the information, all the training that you provide to our residents, and I've been to one of the seminars here. It was very, very enlightening, I would say, and I hope that you will continue that information sharing, because it's really helpful, especially those who are struggling with their housing.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and councilmembers. We are very proud to serve the city of Bellflower, and thank you for this proclamation, and look forward and continue to work with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, thank you again of S. A. O. Shore and Marta Torres. Thank you again. Moving on, under public, under section item ten, Public Comments, Mister Stewart?
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak on another agenda item? As a reminder, please sign up, state your name, and speak directly to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darlene Palacios. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for the good job you've done here, and Public Works, I called about a pothole, and they fixed it immediately, and I wasn't surprised. They did a good job. It was a big pothole, four foot, one foot. Anyway, what I'm, I just realized that there's some kind of law that says they can raise the rent ten percent, and they have, in Bellflower, ten percent on rental properties. So people are getting two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increases, and I guess this is going to be something that's going to be allowed. We don't have rent control in Bellflower. I'm an advocate for a lot of things, mentally ill, the disabled, um, all over, whatever God puts before me. But, uh, rent gouging has become one of the significant causes of homelessness. So we used to have drug addiction, you know, health issues, job loss, and now we're adding rent gouging to the homelessness crisis. I don't know what to say, but it's not going to help the homeless problem. It's going to put more people into homelessness that you can raise the rent. Like I said, some of my neighbors got raised the rent to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And next year, what, it'll be the same? So does anybody have an answer for that? And I'm still waiting on an answer if we will ever get flashing lights at my corner, Rosen Clark, for the disabled. I appreciate, and they appreciate, moving the crosswalk and the extra signs, but we seem to have a problem with speeders. So, um, is there a reason we don't have rent control? The other question I have is, how do I follow up on things? That bulk item pickup? There is very limited bulk item pickup.
Okay. All right. On the bulky item pickup, call Mister Gurecki, he'll tell you how that works. We have a fairly extensive bulky item pickup issue in this city, so we can do that. And I believe we're looking at the flashing lights.
Yeah, and, and as we've explained to Ms. Palacios, we are designing the flashing lights. So those are going to be done, they are in design, once again, so we'll just make that statement here for her.
And I, I just want to add that we, we are very careful in terms of adding something on the street, because the consequence could be bad, just like we were adding a, a crosswalk. You need to have notice before you can paint the street. So we need to follow certain regulations to make sure that we don't get in much bigger trouble than what it is. And in terms of bulky item pickup, there was some kind of misunderstanding that in the past, there was a limit of two pickups per year. That was under the old contractor. Under C R N R, there is no limit, as long as you call them forty-eight hours before your regular pickup day, your bulky item will be picked up by C R N R. So I want to clarify that issue, because I think that the last meeting, there was some kind of question about, there's a limit of two pickups per year. There's no limit anymore, under C R N R. Okay? So I encourage everyone, if you have bulky items pickup, for pickup, please notify C R N R again within forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours prior to the regular scheduled pickup day. And based on my personal experience, they always pick up on time. All right, anyone else?
My name is Esther Levin Bellflower. I would like to speak to the matter of the election process. The county of Shasta has just voted in paper ballots on the same day, realizing that in California, a million more ballots were cast than voters. I would like to encourage our city to follow what Shasta has done to eliminate mail-in ballot, uh, mail-in voting, to eliminate ballot harvesting, and to have, and to eliminate the voting machines, which any hacker, it's been proven by the specialist hackers, that anybody can hack into the voting system and change the votes, and it has happened, and we have proven that. So I would like for us to look at eliminating ballot harvesting and ballot, uh, voting machines, which are made in China, by the way. And the, the military specialists have actually shown that they can get into any voting machine in five minutes, and these are the professionals. So I'd like to eliminate the voting machines, the ballot harvesting, and the mail-in voting, so that we have a free and fair election here in Bellflower. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Just for information, our election is conducted by the L. A. County, so we are combined with a lot of cities within L. A. County. We don't conduct our own election within the city of Bellflower. It's run for us by the county. So, and then, isn't there a law against ballot harvesting anyway?
I don't know. No, I don't know what L. A. County does.
Okay. So if there's an issue with the voting, just, just to finish up the question on voting, on the, on the voting machine, if there's an issue with the voting machine, I think we need to address that with the county recorder's office.
It's my understanding that the voting machines are not connected to a live network to avoid hackers and things like that. The ballot harvesting is, okay, those are set by the Elections Code, which is the state Elections Code.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, you got your three minutes.
I would just like to, I would just like to say, the voting machines, it has been proven, so it's, her understanding is wrong. And I can show you that, I'll be happy to show you, any of you that.
Okay, if you want, you can make an appointment with our city clerk during office, business office hours, and she would, she would love to get your information, so that she can relate with the, with the L. A. County. All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, there being none, moving on. There's no public hearing tonight, there's no ordinance or resolution for consideration, there are no consideration items, and we're so, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who'd like, is there any conflict on the consent calendar? Yes, Mister Coops?
Item E, fourteen E, I have a property near that intersection, so I'll be recusing myself from fourteen E.
Any, any other recusals? Any other conflicts? No more? Okay, I don't have any conflict, as Mister Coops would say. Oh, 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 anyone who'd like to pull an item?
I'd like, Mister Mayor, I'd like to pull fourteen G.
Fourteen G, okay. All right, Mister Coops?
I have nothing to pull.
I'd like to pull item fourteen F. All right, so why don't we, we can have discussion first, and then we can, we can vote later on. Yeah, we can, we can vote, because the others are just basically questions. All right. Fourteen F. Fourteen F is an item regarding the, um, construction of the Thompson Park improvement, playground improvements, and I'd like to ask Mister Gurecki if he can share with us like of the condition of the, that specific area of the park that will be improved, and also the artist's rendering of what it should look like once it is finished.
Yeah, so just, just briefly, the item on consent tonight was for the award of contract to replace one of the playgrounds at Thompson Park. Before you hear, we have a current before picture of what it looks like today on the left-hand side, and then the architect's rendering on what the playground system will look like is on the right-hand side. That's just another angle of it right there, same playground system. And with that, happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, how old is the, the current playground equipment?
I believe PJ was mentioning close to thirty? Yeah, almost thirty years old.
That's one of our oldest playground equipment?
It is the oldest playground.
Okay, okay. Because I remember about, maybe within the last ten years, we added playground equipment, and I was very proud of that. That is the, that's one is capable of taking in a wheelchair, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
ADA, yeah, okay.
ADA compliant.
And is that the only one that we have in the city?
The only ADA compliant?
ADA with a wheelchair.
PJ.
And this one in particular, there's a lot of inclusive pieces. So Lynn, if you can go to the previous, so this piece on the left, it's what you probably remember as a kid, the old steel merry-go-rounds. This one's embedded into the ground, so wheelchairs can go on that. The rope system is meant to be for inclusive, there's several swing sets in the back, so there's many different pieces that have inclusive, um, play for kids that don't have, uh, that do have special needs as far as the, the ability to navigate the playgrounds. So all of them now have specific inclusive play pieces, and we make sure when we're putting in any new playgrounds, that they have these extra pieces in there.
This will be a very nice addition to Thompson Park, once it is completed, I can see that. Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. I just want to let people know that about, at least get a vision of what it's going to look like once it is, once it's replaced with, with this new playground equipment. Any question of Mister Gurecki or Mister Milano? Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so with that, I'd like to get a motion to vote on the rest of these.
Okay, I make a motion to vote, uh, the consent calendar fourteen A through H with the exclusion of B.
And B and G, for now.
Oh, and G is a separate vote, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and add G to that, my motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to approve the consent calendar except B and, B and G.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, you also added item H tonight.
Yeah, I did say, I did say that, through H.
Thank you.
Through H, thank you for the reminder. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinez?
Aye. All right, item G. No, we'll vote it later. Oh, oh, should we vote?
Let's do B first, no, okay, yeah, I forgot I was on G.
Okay, let's vote B first, okay. Make a motion on B?
I don't want to make a motion, yeah.
Motion on B.
Someone else has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt, approve consent calendar 14B.
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Coops to approve item 14B. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Denton?
Mine would be a symbolic no. Sacramento passes rules amongst us that they don't want to follow. And when I see that, I have a hard time with it. Not saying it's not a good idea, but mine votes a no on 14B.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, now, 14G. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Denton is recused on 14G.
Yeah, this is an item, as you know, has been brought back. It came up about a month and a half ago. Jim's going to give you an update on that and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As you might recall, staff presented the findings of this study during a special meeting of the City Council on December 15th. City Council requested that staff bring the item back approximately 90 days for further discussion. As in the previous, staff prepared parking analysis in 2020. This study concluded that there remains sufficient parking capacity in the north downtown area to handle both the current parking demand as well as the demand that we can anticipate from projects in the pipeline at the time the study was done. Secondarily, the analysis also examined the potential parking impacts of adding trash compactors in the downtown parking lots, incorporating parklets and angled parking in the downtown, and it provided possible parking management strategies. During City Council discussion at the December 15th, 2022 meeting, the City Council inquired about implementing parking and new fees for new development in the downtown, as well as potentially converting Edenmore Avenue and Oak Street east of Bellflower Boulevard to one-way streets in an effort to create additional on-street parking spaces. As a result of the various potential changes discussed in the study, and in light of major change in California law, specifically AB 2097, which prohibits parking agents, public agencies from imposing minimum automobile parking requirements for development projects within one-half mile of major transit stops, staff is recommending the City Council receive and file the parking study, authorize the city manager to update the parking analysis based on changes in the California law, and conduct an environmental assessment, of the various parking options listed in the study, and place this on a future agenda for consideration and possible action. So that's a bit of an update on the previous study and the current one that you see before you.
All right, any question of Mr. Delonge? Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess my first question would be, and I think the, I think Mr. Delonge answered that question. I think bringing it back would probably be the adequate answer at this point in time. My interest in the parking study is really the, well, let me take a step back. I think it's good to hear that we have ample parking. But I think my interest in the parking studies relates to the possibility of parklets and introducing that into our downtown if it's feasible. And I think that's a whole nother conversation, a separate conversation. And I think it would take a long, a lot more time to digest or go into details. So I just want to make that comment at this point in time. But I'd like to see us bring this back at a later date as part of a master plan for the downtown.
Can we have some kind of introduction to parklets? What parklets are all about? At least as a starter?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think that's a great start.
Right now, yeah, okay. Well, parklets are usually built out into parking spaces along major boulevards to create extra pedestrian space. They can be used for open space, just basic seating, or they could be used for dining and so forth.
So how do you envision a parklet on Bellflower Boulevard? Are we going to take away parking space to create a parklet? I mean, just?
Potentially. That's why we'd have to look at this closer.
Okay, just conceptually?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, given where the restaurants are downtown, I don't know if there's a way we could do parklets without taking away some spaces. But we don't have all the answers on it yet. We'd have to look into this more deeply.
Because I was kind of thinking that based on your, not definition, illustration of what a parklet is, I'm kind of envisioning Johnny Rebs, because I think I was in planning commission back then when we created that, I think it's parklets, bulbout. We basically reduced Laurel Street from two lanes to one lane to allow for extra space for, that's why they were able to expand the outdoor dining for Johnny Rebs. And at the same time, there was also a bulbout at the east-west end of that, where's the pizza place now is? There's a bulbout to create that extra outdoor dining. Is that what a parklet would look like?
A parklet would be on a more of a temporary basis rather than a built-in bulbout with curb and gutter and so forth. Parklets are typically more temporary in nature and are built like a deck to be level with the sidewalk.
I see, okay.
It achieves the same end. You can address them permanently, or as Jim said, long-term temporarily. There's multiple ways to do it. I think we'd have to do an assessment of where the demand might be. It's, the rules in that have changed pretty dramatically since the end of COVID. You know, we'll have to see where that goes. There's still maybe some demand for it, but right now, we don't know.
Okay, all right. That's a good introduction.
Got a question. So would it be safe to say that a pocket park is permanent and a parklet is temporary?
That sounds like a fair assessment. Pocket parks are usually on a piece of property, not in the street.
I think that what he means by parklet is not necessarily an open space, but a space that's actually occupied within the public right of way in front of a place of business to allow additional pedestrian thoroughfare, or just to increase the amount of seating that's outside of one of the places that requires it, like a restaurant, you know?
So when we look at our kiosks, that is somewhat of a parklet, isn't it?
Yes, but those are actually permanent. That is a parklet built out onto Belmont Street there, and those kiosks are permanent parts of that. But yes, Belmont and Laurel would both be examples of what theoretically is a parklet, but designed in a permanent way.
That's a new concept for the Boulevard, that's for sure. But I remember seeing in Long Beach where during and after the pandemic, there were many restaurants that built what looked to be temporary structures that were raised about a foot so that the water could travel.
And frankly, they've proven to be pretty popular. There is, there is a legitimate reason to discuss the addition of parklets for certain areas of town, but it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, and who would use it, and which boulevards it'd go on. And my guess is Bellflower Boulevard would be the primary location, perhaps some places on Artesia, but I'm guessing Bellflower, so.
And to answer Sunny's question about, at a sacrifice of parking spaces, when you look at what you just described on Laurel Street, that was a sacrifice of parking spaces, and probably about a half a dozen. When you consider what was on Laurel on both sides. So that's, I guess we got a way.
Yeah, we did, yeah. Okay, but at least we know now what a parklet is all about. All right, Councilmember Sanchez?
No, that's good with me, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions?
No, not at this time. I think this is definitely more of a conversation we want to bring back at a later date. I think this was a good introduction, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Coops?
All the questions have been answered.
Oh my goodness, okay. I get some question here. In the analysis, there was a discussion about the two-hour parking in terms of, there was some mention about, about 4% of the long, well, I would say long-term parking, about six hours, something. I think it's about six hours, if I read correctly. They're parked more than six hours, about 4% of the cars, vehicles. And the consultant kind of surmised that they're most likely the employees of the business along Bellflower Boulevard. So my question is, what are we doing about it as a city to address that issue?
Well, enforcement.
If it's a problem that the council identifies is ongoing, and we necessarily need to free those spaces up, they would adapt, adopt limited-term parking on the public parking that the city owns, which is a fairly significant amount on, off the Boulevard, on Bellflower. So I think the area that was most impacted was the area that was between Belmont and Oak Street. And that was due to one business where folks were gathering during the day, 30, 35 people during the day. The business has shuttered, and that building's up for sale now. And I think that the parky has been relieved. That's not to say it couldn't occur in the future, it could. And I suspect that's one of those things where the council probably needs to look hard at doing time-based parking, restricted parking on those parking lots between Oak and Belmont, and Oak and Flower Street on the other side of the street, just east and west of Bellflower Boulevard.
Okay. And I know that in reading the materials for tonight, the consultant also mentioned about metered parking in terms of locations, in terms of, it's almost like it's going to look like blight. If you put, especially if you put a metered parking, meter, a meter after every stall. It just doesn't look good for a sip or downtown.
You don't need to do metered parking to enforce that.
Yeah, there are new ways of doing paid parking too, if that's a direction that council wants to go. It's not all just meters anymore.
But at some point in time, I think we need to make a decision in terms of enforcing the two-hour parking. Is there any, from a legal perspective, is there any, anything that we need to cross our teeth or dot our i's in terms of enforcing the two-hour parking? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, from a legal perspective, everything's on the books that you need in order to enforce. From a practical perspective, you simply need to make sure that the signage is up before you send people out to start issuing citations and towing vehicles.
And I think if we need to do that, then we need to also have a study about parking meter at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if the council wants to get serious about making sure that it's more parking available and you want to do time-based parking, we can look at all those alternatives, including meters, paid parking. As Jim said, there's multiple ways to do that with not necessarily putting meters in. But, you know, I mean, we see them all over the place now with central pay stations, et cetera, on these parking lots. That's something we certainly could look at.
Is it practical to, let's say, enforce the two-hour parking starting first along Bellflower Boulevard?
It's practical to start wherever you'd like to and see where it goes.
Because I think if we were to start somewhere, I'd like to start on the Boulevard first in terms of enforcing two-hour parking.
You mean on the, on the street parking?
On the street parking. To basically encourage, because as far as I'm concerned, there's plenty of parking in the back. It's always that they try to find parking in the front so that they, I know their reasoning, they have to take less steps from the car to the establishment that they'd like to go to. But I really want to encourage our visitors, our residents, to take advantage of the parking in the back. There's plenty of parking.
Correct, the parking on the west side of Bellflower Boulevard is not time-limited, and the parking structure is not time-limited. But the parking along Bellflower Boulevard is two-hour parking as well as the parking on the east side of Bellflower Boulevard, behind the shops.
Okay, yeah. Well, especially, you know, by the sheriff's station, substation?
That's not time-limited.
Yeah, and there's plenty of parking there.
Yes.
Usually. Okay, that's good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in on that conversation real quick?
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe I'm mistaken here, but I, under the impression that there was a law passed that it takes effect of last January or this past January, where we're not able to necessarily do a parking fee? Or am I?
That's, there's a difference between time-based parking and restricted parking and developments standards for parking.
Okay, very good.
And the law affects only the development standards of new developments coming in.
Got it, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Because I think, my understanding is because we own the parking space, so we can charge for parking, is that right? There you go.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Councilmember Coops, please chime in.
When we discuss parking meters and their ramifications and metered parking, those are things that Bellflower once had back in the 50s. And there was a big movement to take out all the parking meters, which you now see, they're a long-forgotten memory. And the merchants applauded the council for getting rid of them because it impeded commerce. And actually, we had a guy on a Harley-Davidson tricycle motorcycle who his job was to go around the city and mark tires and monitor when it was the two hours was up. I mean, it was very succinct, it was very well-run. But over time, as the downtown deteriorated, in the days when we were hoping for a parking problem, which we now are discussing, I'm concerned that we bring back some of these measures unless they have a little different tilt to them than they did in the 50s and 60s. And the city manager brought up time-based parking and centralized parking, and there's all kinds of electronics and stuff that have now been provided that, we were doing old mechanical ways of monitoring parking back in those days. But whatever we do, we need to maintain the ambiance of the Bellflower Boulevard and the friendliness of it all. I don't want it to look like a militarized zone in terms of having, I want to welcome the people here. I don't know this would work, but I, we used to have, again, I'm going back in history, an electric cart called a tram. And I know that one of the things that we've been looking at is how do we get people to use that magnificent parking structure that has 300 parking spaces in it? And so they park there, but now they're 350, 400 yards from where they want to be in terms of shopping or employment. Is there a way that we could have some sort of, I'm not saying that elaborate, an item, but something that they could get on and we, every 10 or 20 minutes, it drops off people along the Boulevard and goes back to this parking structure? But somehow, we need to utilize that, say, that structure in a more effective way. Because now it's simply used as a place to park all day, and the cars don't move, there's no real movement there. But we've got three stories of parking possibilities. I think the top two are roped off right now. But just wondering other ways that we can, we've got the space. We just need to get it moved around so it's effective. But I'm open for anything, but it's difficult for me to go back to old reforms.
Well, what I'm getting at is, I mean, overall, we don't need to implement any of these parking restrictions today. Because if you look at the study, there's ample parking.
But it's a matter of making sure that people know it's there and they utilize it.
And if you look at the study, one of the things that they mentioned was directional signs. I know that economic development put plenty of directional signs. But my, I'm just jumping to another item here. But are they effective? That's my question, one of my questions. Because I don't think people are noticing those signs.
I don't think we know the answer to that question. I will say with the parking structure, the parking structure is close enough for folks to access most of the downtown. And the areas that are not accessible from the parking structure will, they don't have a real parking issue. The parking issue is clustered north of Flower Street, mainly on the Boulevard, a handful of other places. I think what you'll see is, when things get busier on the north side, north of, say, Belmont Street before the railroad tracks, that I think that people will use the structure and they will walk to the areas there. They just don't have to now, because they generally find a space behind either the west side or the east side of Bellflower Boulevard, south of Oak Street. That's been pretty convenient for them. If you think about people that go to Pasadena, Brea, or any of the other downtowns that are, that are busier, people will happily walk a quarter of a mile to get to where they need to go. It's just part of the, part of the event in doing so. And I don't think this place is any exception. I think the, I think all these discussions are worth having. I think we should all do it. But I think what you'll see is the parking structure will get utilized, especially as the development goes on in front of the Edgeway project there. And when they build the additional units and more people are there, and when people are going to the restaurants that are on the east side of Bellflower Boulevard. I don't, I think it's premature to say how we're going to address the issue, and the issue hasn't occurred yet, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think we're just kind of planting the seeds here, because I don't think we're going to take any action today. But it's a, it's a good discussion. And I was going back to directional sign. One of the things that our consultant cautioned us is the signage blight. If you put too many signs, then it kind of loses its effectiveness. So my question to staff is, are these signs right the way they're designed? Or do you think that they are very effective in conveying the message to the drivers?
Well, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, it's hard to tell because people are using the parking they're used to using. The signs are new, they are brightly colored, they're different from the other signs that are out there that have other information on it. So we're hoping that they're effective. But I think people want to park as close to what they're going to go do as possible, and so they're not parking in the structure at this time.
Right, because I think they're going back to, I mean, I had a conversation with a lady a few months ago, and she was complaining about parking. And she says, there's no place to park. Well, so I asked her, where exactly are you trying to park? And she said, well, on the Boulevard. Well, that may be the case. Sometimes it's hard for me to find parking on the Boulevard itself. But if you go back in the other side of the Boulevard, there is parking. is parking. And she just went on and on about lack of parking, as we compare to the old days, there's plenty of parking. So, so I asked her, where do you want to go back to the old days? For example, let's say, when Smart, when Smart and Final wasn't on the Boulevard, when it was on Stevens and Alondra, I mean, you can park 10 big rigs on that parking lot where Smart and Final is. So times have changed, so we, we cannot, and we should not go back to those days. But, so I'm, I'm glad that we're having this kind of discussion, so at least we can plan for the future. But again, the bottom line is, for right now, we don't take, we don't need to take any action, because as of, based on the report from the consultant, which verified by, confirmed by staff, there is ample parking in downtown Bellflower.
Correct.
Okay. Let me see it. And the other thing I want to talk about is angled parking, one of the suggestions from the consultant, something to look into. Okay, can you talk about the angled parking on the Boulevard?
Well, the angled parking on the Boulevard was added as per suggestion from city council, so we added, asked the consultant to include that. And they just looked at it in general to see if that would be a feasible way to maybe possibly increase some parking by creating angled parking, whether traditional angled parking or reverse-end angled parking on the Boulevard. There was a previous study already done regarding that several years ago, and they said, basically found that you need to kind of really do an, an analysis to determine how that's going to impact surrounding traffic patterns in the downtown and, and the traffic signals and intersections and so forth.
So if we were to implement angled parking, how will it look like on the Boulevard? Just conceptually, conceptually.
Probably just between Flower and Oak Street, where there's potential room for it, but it would reduce the lanes in each direction by one, so you'd be.
One on its, one on its direction.
Correct. And then you'd have to figure out how to merge traffic north and south to come to that one lane in each direction. So you'd be dealing with stuff south of Flower as well as north of Main Street and, and across the train tracks, and so trying to create that merge into one lane.
Okay. I, 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 I will be blunt about that. That would be a disaster, I think. Because I experienced that. I don't know if you're familiar with Artesia and Pioneer?
Yes.
They tried to do that, what they call the, the traffic diet, combining two lanes into one on, before 183rd. Sorry, envisioning combining two lanes, north, let's say, southbound, after the railroad track, you're gonna be merging two lanes into one around Oak. That's gonna be problematic. Right, I would say right away, that's get problematic, because where would the others' car go? I mean, that's gonna, right now, there's so much, there's, it's good. There's traffic already in, on the Boulevard, okay? There's traffic light on, in front of all the, there's traffic light on Alondra, in then, then there's traffic on, on Flora Vista. So I, I would say that, just on my opinion on this, I think that's gonna create a bigger problem for us. Because I'm also envisioning that if we reduce it into one lane, angled parking, so if I remember correctly, the consultant said at the last presentation, there's a way to back into the parking space?
Yeah, that's reverse, reverse angled parking.
If it's painful, the angled parking way, it's doubly painful to do the reverse.
I know. Because not, not every car is equipped with a back, with a backing camera anyway. So that's gonna be problematic. And I can just envision, there's one lane and someone is trying to, to back in, so basically the whole, that, that one lane is blocking the meantime.
That entirely, yeah.
I think, I think it's gonna be very painful for us to, to witness this. And, and, and mind you, I, I'm having difficulty, well, I was at Rikis one time, around 11:30 or between 11:30 and 12:00, I picked up something, and I was just trying to merge into lane two because of traffic. It took me about probably 30 seconds to one minute to merge into lane two. And that's simply a part of their parking. So I can just imagine one lane being left. So anyway, that's just my, my take on angled parking.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Got it. Notes taken.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coops?
Add to what you're saying. I think all of us have enjoyed Main Street and Seal Beach, and how that head-in parking works well there. But they don't funnel four lanes into two there. And that street is not a major thoroughfare like Bellflower Boulevard is. Right. So, you know, but you look at that and say, wow, this is kind of cool. They've created a village atmosphere here, and they got face-in parking. But we don't have all the right elements to make that kind of definition. And I think that one of the things that we have to really be proud of is how the city, we were getting all these complaints about the activities going on, not positive activities, at the parking structure. But Joel has now had Southwest Patrol, increased patrol. We haven't had nearly as much problem with that structure. And I agree with what has been said by city manager Stewart, that when we get the Serrano project, Edgemont finished, there's gonna be enough activity there that we won't have the, the kinds of nonsense that goes on there. But I think a lot of people weren't using that structure because they were intimidated by it. They, to go in there, they didn't feel safe. But I think that's been put aside.
And they really didn't have to. There was plenty of parking, so they didn't really have to use the structure. I think as parking gets more crowded and we get more cars here, they'll have to start using the structure.
But I think we're working in the right direction here. We've just got to take baby steps at it and try to reinvent the wheel here. And it'll be interesting to see what kind of retail establishments establish on Bellflower Boulevard in the new project in front of Serrano's Edgemont. That could be some real different traffic counts just based on what happens with those retailers there. So it's a work in progress, as it always has been. But I am concerned, as you are, of being able to have head-in parking on the Boulevard without disrupting everything. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll add to the conversation at this time on that one.
Councilmember Sanchez, go ahead.
I, too, I mean, I, I hear that, those concerns. And I think for me, right now, I'm approaching my attitude on this item more as to how do we create a more pedestrian-friendly, walkable downtown? I'm not saying that parklets or that, that angled parking are the solution. They are an option. So I'm more on the side of how do we create that more favorable, walkable, pedestrian, family-oriented downtown, as we see our downtown continue to boom, and that's the direction we want to take it. Which leads me to my next comment. On page 27, the, 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 our consultants have recommended that the implementation of either angled parking, parklets, or both are not with significant impact to roadway geometry, and as such, the benefits and disadvantages of the alternative should be carefully considered. In addition, multiple discussions with stakeholders and extensive public outreach are recommended as part of the implementation process. I think that's one of the topics that we should consider this evening, when this comes back to us, is have we done the extensive outreach, public outreach, and, and, and had the conversations with the stakeholders as to what we want to see? I'll tell you, I, I walk the downtown pretty frequently. It is not safe at times to cross or to walk from one restaurant to another, or to go from Steel Craft to, to Franks, or, I mean, Boz from, to Franks, or so forth, especially with the family on a stroller and things of that nature. Cars don't stop. And that, that's where, when we're driving this type of environment to bring in, you know, young families into our downtown to shop and to eat at this high-end, or at these quality restaurants that we're, we're bringing to our downtown, how do we, you know, support that? And I, and I guess that's where my mindset is at. I just want to be, you know, transparent on that end.
All right. Thank you. All right. So for tonight, Jim, what do you need from us? Receiving file?
You've given us enough direction. We can bring items back at a future council meeting. But for tonight, receiving files is all they actually need to take.
Uh, but the, so basically, just the first recommendation, number one, number two, number three? I want to be clear about, are we giving direction for a study?
Well, yeah, I think we have, you've given us direction to look at several different things, and I think we have that, and we will bring it back. But Jim, do you want a formal recommendation on that?
Well, we would, we would ask the, the consultant to look at the study in lieu of the new legislation that was passed, to make sure all the, all the assumptions are valid.
What I'm getting at is, are the recommended action on the, on the agenda tonight, is that sufficient for you to move forward?
Yes.
Yeah, easily.
Yes.
Okay. More than enough, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Can we just get an idea of the timeline of when it would come back?
Two months.
It's confirmed with the consultant. Let's say 90.
90 sounds good.
90 is better.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so within 90 days. All right. Is that good enough? Okay.
Need a motion for anything?
Yes, I do.
So I'll make a motion to give the city staff direction on what we've just discussed, and to bring this back within 90 days.
90 days. Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to give direction to staff based on the discussion, to come back to city council for discussion within 90 days. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right.
Mr. Dutton, please. There he is.
I thought you went home.
I still have to do some business.
Okay. Council, council reports, Councilmember Dunn.
I'll go first, yeah. So the heavy heart that I have to announce that Carol A. Moffett Rogers has passed away, that's the woman that owned the Moffett's Restaurant that used to be on Bellflower Boulevard, I mean, on Bellflower, Lakewood Boulevard, you know, for many years. Their family here in town was a staple, and, and they had those fabulous chicken pot pies. Anyway, Carol was born on January 16th, 1937, in Alberta, Canada, and passed away March 23rd, 2023, at the age of 86. Her parents owned and operated several restaurants in Placerville, California. Carol grew up around and worked in restaurants from young, from a young age. She later became the owner and operator of Henry Moffett's Chicken Pot Pies Restaurant here in Bellflower. Carol was an active community member with notable contributions, such as the Seropitres International and Miss Bellflower Pageant. She had three siblings, who she was very close to, Kenneth Becker, Judy Makin, and Joan Lang. Carol leaves behind a loving family, including her husband Carol Rogers also, with two Rs, and 10 children, 12 grandchildren, as well as counselors, friends, who benefited greatly from knowing her. Our deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Moffett Rogers family. And with that, I'd like to request the mayor to close the meeting tonight in honor of Carol Moffett.
Okay, will do. Thank you so much, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Coops?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to ask for adjournment for Carol Alice Rusting, who passed away this March 23rd, 2023. Carol Rusting was born August 1st, 1964, to Clarence and Maria, Maria Rusting, and passed away on March 23rd, 2023, at the age of 58. Carol grew up visiting the dairy where her father worked. She spent many hours watching and learning life skills and reading from her mother, sister, and brother. She learned to read when she was, when she wasn't even expected to speak by experts at UCLA. She graduated from Artesia High School and attended classes at Sarita's College. She grew up traveling with her family, exploring the United States and the world. She went to Holland, Australia, New Zealand, Hawaii, and Canada. One of, one of her favorite vacations was her 50th birthday trip to Hawaii. Carol was on the Bellflower swim team and went on to compete in Special Olympics in swimming and bowling, winning both, winning medals in both. She was a guest on KCET, where she was interviewed on TV to promote the Easter Seals telethon. She loved celebrations and was with family for every birthday and holiday. She lived at Salem Emmanuel Home in Lakewood from 2003 until she passed away. She had a wonderful staff that cared for her and that, that she loved. Carol showed unconditional love and enthusiasm. She had a positive effect on everyone who knew her. Carol leaves behind a loving family, including sister Marion Rusting and brother-in-law Bill Mori, loved ones Mika and Matthew Rusting Mori, as well as countless friends who benefited greatly from knowing her. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Rusting family. Mr. Mayor, I may have said that she lived in Lakewood, but all her activities and all her friends and family at one point lived in Bellflower, and she spent most of her time in Bellflower. Carol was someone I knew dearly, someone that I, I took care of at one point for, for close to eight years, and a good friend, and someone who always gave you this nice big smile every time you saw her. And, you know, I, my, my, my thoughts and condolences are with the family. So just want to ask that we end also in, in Carol Alice Rusting's honor.
Okay, we will do. Thank you so much. For my announcement, just a couple. I would like to officially welcome Suit and Tux Warehouse, located on 16623 Bellflower Boulevard, and Glamour Hair by Hala, located at 9838 Flower Street. We had the ribbon-cutting opening, grand opening ceremonies last, last week, and they were all attended by our city council. So welcome to the city of Bellflower. And with that, this meeting is being adjourned in memory of Carol Alice Rusting and Carol A. Moffett Rogers to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 on Monday, April 24, 2023. So this meeting is adjourned.